...Cometa Hall. We have two items on the agenda. First item up is 200 mil proposals. Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Cliff Long, Economic Development Director. I'm here tonight to present the results of the process that will determine the future of the 200 mil Avenue project property, which is the site of Renton's former city hall. The city-owned site at 200 mil Avenue sits in the heart of what has been identified as the civic node, a confluence of major civic, recreation, and cultural amenities within Renton's downtown. It's centrally located but underutilized 3.79 acre property improved with a seven-story office building built in 1969 as the former Renton City Hall and a large surface parking lot. The site is located adjacent to the Renton Library, across the Cedar River from Liberty Park, and within a few blocks of key downtown services and landmarks. With a long linear frontage on the Cedar River, the property presents both a challenge and a tremendous opportunity for the development that will require a thoughtful approach to maximize its potential public and economic development benefits. The former city hall building is currently approximately 72 percent occupied with a mix of public, nonprofit, and private tenants, a majority of which pay market leases currently. Despite this, building operations have run at a deficit in the past several years, which has required the city to support maintenance and upgrades from the city's general fund. Between 2013 and 2016, the city invested approximately $1.8 million in building improvements, partially through a loan that requires annual payments of $175,000 that began in 2016. The building is in an aging condition that will require increased ongoing maintenance and significant upgrades to bring the building up to a level that would improve operating performance and marketability. A 2009 building study estimated this cost at more than $10 million. A recent property valuation suggested it's unlikely that such expenses would be recovered by significantly increased lease income based on relatively weak demand for office space of this caliber in the south end market. In late 2016-17, the city completed an RFP process that did not yield a successful development partner. In October 2017, the city initiated a second RFP solicitation process to again entertain proposals to acquire the 200 mil Avenue building and surrounding property. The request for interest was published in August 2017 and received several expressions of interest. From the response list, three firms were invited to submit development proposals. The city ultimately received two proposals by its January 3 deadline. An internal review committee was put together with city staff from facilities, finance, legal, economic development, and planning, as well as the assistance of council members Corman and Pavoni. We also hired a consultant, Lotus Development Partners, and Michelle Moreland represents them on our team. So there were a number of evaluation factors spelled out in the RFP process. responsiveness to city objectives, qualification and capacity of the teams. Site tours of their completed projects were required. We wanted to know what their proposed development concept was for the site and what their proposed purchase offer might be. In addition, each of the teams received an independent financial feasibility review and came in and did a two-hour interview with the committee at the end of the process. So the city objectives that were outlined in the RFP were really to follow the lead of the city center plan and the CD zone and work together with the various city departments that provided the input and history in the site. We wanted to return an underutilized site to a private use that fosters the image and function of the community plan civic node concept and the center downtown zone. We wanted to provide enhanced access, visibility, and connections to the surrounding civic, natural, and cultural amenities and downtown business district, and we wanted any project to achieve a superior 360-degree building and site design that does not turn its back on the surrounding uses. And finally, we wanted to maximize the site's appeal, bringing in more intensive round-the-clock activity and energy to the area. In addition, we know that we need to retain parking for the public library as an important component of this project. We wanted to provide public benefits and amenities that enhance the nature and character of the site and the surrounding uses that exceeds the city's minimum development standards. And of course, we asked the developers to provide a fair market return to the city in the disposition of the property. So a brief summary of the development proposals. Both respondents delivered a very high-quality and thoughtful proposal for development that would intensify and energize this important location. Both assembled very impressive teams and clearly demonstrated the capacity to carry out such a complex development plan. The two proposals offer a vision to bring high-quality residential development at urban densities to this site, coupled with some level of quality private and public amenities to enhance the resident experience. The proposals primarily differ in their approach to utilizing the site to meet a broader array of important community interests and maximizing the development potential of the shoreline as a public asset with the participation and collaboration of the city to realize that So with that, I'd like to present, council, with a summary of both of the proposals. The first we'll start with is the Cosmos proposal. The Cosmos team consists of Bellevue-based Cosmos Development Company as a developer and owner, partnered with Charter Construction, Seattle-based Jackson Maine Architecture, DCI engineers for both the civil and structural, the watershed company for shoreline and environmental work, Brumbaugh and Associates as landscape architects, and Heffron Transportation. So team project examples. Obviously Cosmos has recently developed the lofts at Second and Main here in downtown Renton, and they have two other large-scale development projects planned in Redmond and Linwood that they shared with us. On the tour, the team was able to tour projects in Redmond, the Redmond Square project, also the mixed-use tower that Cosmos developed in downtown Bellevue. We also had a chance to view the recently finished Lake Hills Mixed Use Center in eastern Bellevue that Cosmos developed. It's interesting to note that this also has a KCLS branch facility located within it. What their proposal was for the 200 mil site was approximately 450 units of rental housing done in two phases. There'll be three buildings, five to eight stories tall in phase one, and up to 12 stories tall in the second phase. That is coupled with approximately 30,000 square feet of ground-level retail storefront space within the two buildings, and then an office/educational component of approximately 35,000 square feet. Their approach to dealing with the former city hall building would be to demolish the building as part of their second phase where it would be replaced by a waterfront park. In terms of parking, this proposal aims to have about 500 spaces in a structured parking garage with one level that would provide parking for retail and office patrons, as well as overflow shared parking for the library at no charge, and then two dedicated levels of parking for residents. In terms of public amenities space here, Cosmos proposes a public-private partnership that would result in a new 2.1 acre park that would include the library parking in Plaza and restore open space along the Cedar River. In terms of the public development portion, the team proposed to provide a $2 million cash contribution to help the city participate in the development of the waterfront park improvements along the Cedar River. The city would take the lead where appropriate, potentially in planning and community engagement. Cosmos would provide the development capacity to enable the city to efficiently complete the improvements, and then the improved parcel would be separated legally and dedicated back to the city at no cost. Also included in the proposal is that the city would continue to own the library surface parking lot once the landscaping improvements are completed there, and the private development component is contingent on the city making the commitment to participating in the agreed-upon public improvements along the riverfront. Their purchase price offer, Cosmos offered full broker's opinion of value, which was $7.3 million, plus the additional $2 million contribution towards a new Cedar River waterfront park, and then that parcel, again, would be dedicated back to the city at no cost upon the completion of the park construction. So here is a site plan proposed by Cosmos. It's a joint coordinated public-private partnership. It would demolish the former city hall upon the expiration of tenant leases and provide a potential home for the consolidation of Renton Prep. It would provide approximately 450 studio one-two, one and two-bedroom units, residential units, in two mid-rise buildings and one high-rise building ranging in height from six to 12 stories. The development is proposed to be done in three phases. Approximately 30,000 feet of retail space within two buildings with a pedestrian walkway or a muse, providing internal site access to some of the retail space. The retail uses are primarily proposed to support the new residential units and the immediate surrounding downtown area. And the additional 35,000 square feet of educational/office space in Building B is meant to accommodate the potential relocation and consolidation of Renton Prep. One structured parking garage with one full level below grade and two partial levels above grade are proposed. Parking would accommodate approximately 500 spaces that would serve the residential, retail, and education office uses, as well as providing overflow parking for the library. The garage would be constructed as part of Phase One, so significant excess parking space could be made available to the public prior to the full build-out. The overall project schedule envisioned a phased development over the next three to seven years, subject to the timing of the city improvement as well as market conditions. So here is a perspective. Again, these are massing perspectives and not full design drawings, so this is meant to show the relationship of the six, the eight, and the 12-story building. This would be a view from the Plaza. Here would be a view from the library bridge. And here is a perspective from the Liberty Park side showing the waterfront Plaza. And these are some examples of potential amenities that could be included in the riverfront park, including some sort of amphitheater feature or features that would provide some level of direct connection to the water for citizens. Next, I'd like to briefly go through the LMC proposal as well. LMC is a company that's owned by Lennar Company. Lennar is now the nation's largest home builder with operations in 47 markets in 19 states. They have a market valuation of $18.5 billion and are publicly traded. LMC was formed, I believe, approximately 2011 timeframe as a multifamily development component of Lennar. They are teamed with Encore Architects and with Weisman Design Group and with KPFF. Encore has partnered with LMC on approximately 1,000 residential units in the area. Weisman Design is their landscape architect, and KPFF is their civil engineer. In terms of experience and representative projects, this is the Atlas Project in Issaquah on Gilman that the team had a chance to tour. This is the Whittaker Apartments in West Seattle. And these are examples of the kind of courtyard amenity spaces that their projects provide. So their proposal for the 200 mil site, we'll start with the residential component. They have proposed approximately 321 residential units, ranging from studios to loft two-bedroom units. All of it is in a single U-shaped building and built in a single phase of development. In terms of retail and office and other uses, there's approximately 8,700 square feet of retail included in their proposal, not counting additional live-work units that they have put in their proposal along the Hauser frontage. And the illustration here on this slide shows what their live-work units would be like. High storefront windows that could be utilized for something like an accountant's office where they would have, you know, a small office up front. You can sign the outside of the building and live essentially in mezzanine space within the unit. Those could be, essentially, they could start off as residential units and be converted as the market changes. They primarily envision their retail components to be coffee shops, potentially walk-in medical clinics, and service-oriented units, uses, excuse me, that would be of benefit to the residents of the project. Their treatment of the former city hall, their RFP actually contemplated two different proposals. The first one was a light refurbishment of the building to be retained for office use, and the second would be to demolish the building and restore the shoreline landscaping, and the demolition cost would be deducted from their purchase offer. Their preference is to remove the building, but what they showed in terms of the site plan and other materials within the RFP shows the 200 mil building remaining. In terms of parking, their project provides approximately 350 spaces in a three-level parking structure and no disturbance whatsoever to the library parking. In terms of public amenities offered by their proposal, they have offered to do a pocket park at the corner of Mil and Hauser and a public pedestrian connector and art walk that would be along the frontage of the library and towards the 200 mil site. The purchase proposal from LMC proposed a purchase price of $2.655 million. And then in their proposal, summing up the risks and costs of demolition and the value of the public infrastructure that they believe they will be required, they valued the combined value to the city of just under $5.2 million. This is a general site plan. In this case, again, it shows the existing buildings still in place, but you can see the large, single structure basically at the corner of Mil and Hauser with a, it's U-shaped with a large central courtyard plaza that was oriented in the direction that it is in order to catch the most amount of light possible given the site. This shows the proposal for the elevated amenity courtyard for the residents. And again, this is an example perspective showing the scale of the proposed LMC building. This would be looking south down Mil Avenue from, kind of out in the middle of the street in front of the library, looking south. And this is a perspective of the proposed massing, showing the project from Hauser and Mil. And so you can see at the corner there where the proposed pocket park would be. So in summary, I'd like to go through the review committee conclusions and recommendation. So each of these teams were scored. The two proposals were reviewed and rated by the review committee based on the scoring criteria that was laid out in the RFP, including the categories listed above, and providing a total of 150 possible points. The scoring was close, but as you can see, LMC proposal scored 117.5 by consensus, and 132.1 was the score for Cosmos. I'd like to go through a quick breakdown of the city objectives. As noted earlier, the city intends that the proposed development of the 200 mil site will achieve certain city objectives. Both teams prevented, presented development concepts that address most of these objectives with a higher intensity development plan that brings a variety of different uses to the site and creates a more urban center feel. Both proposals would increase the round-the-clock utilization of the site with more intensive residential development, supported by a mix of public and private amenities. The LMC team proposed a high-quality residential development that would draw upon the site's location and existing amenities to enhance the resident experience. The Cosmos proposal showed a more robust array of uses to energize the site and create a sense of place or destination development that reflects the importance of this location within downtown Renton and the proposed, excuse me, and proposed to improve the site to provide significant benefits to the broader community. So in conclusion, the review committee was impressed with the caliber of both development teams and the thoughtful approach that each took to delivering a high-quality development proposal to this location. Both proposals, if fully completed, would bring a greater density to the area and catalyze vibrant urban development pattern to this end of downtown. Both development teams have a demonstrated track record and capacity to deliver on the concepts that they proposed. The LMC proposal shows a high-quality residential development that would be a valuable asset nearly anywhere in downtown Renton. However, the Cosmos development team proposed a more diverse array of uses that would serve to energize the site and create a sense of place. Also, they added value to the river frontage as an asset to be preserved and brought into more accessible use as a public amenity. They significantly improved on the concept that Cosmos presented in the last RFP round. They showed a great willingness to provide the necessary returns to the city while engaging the city as a development partner, and we feel that this approach could ultimately yield greater community participation in the planning of the riverfront improvements while giving the city control of the property upon completion. In terms of concerns with the recommended proposal, obviously, project phasing and realization of the full build-out is market-dependent. A 12-story building will only be possible when the market matures and the overall site is energized with other uses. However, it's important to note that the risk to reaching this long-term vision is largely borne by the developer, given the simple and significant upfront, excuse me, the simple fact of the significant upfront investments they will make in the parking and public amenities in their phasing plan. And in addition, the retail lease-up schedule anticipates significant delay due to the construction timeline and the impacts for construction on retail, so it will be a process. These scheduled concerns and expectations for performance should be addressed in any development agreement. The details of public participation and roles and responsibilities and the cost burdens must clearly be established as part of a development agreement. So in terms of next steps and timeline, the RFP process describes the next steps upon selection of the development team. Council would authorize the city to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the selected team, which would establish a scope and a timeline in which both parties would conduct initial feasibility analysis and due diligence activities sufficient to arrive at a mutually acceptable disposition and development plan. The proposed timeline starts with the approval of the selected development team and execution of the ENA upon selection. Upon execution of the ENA, the selected team would provide an earnest money deposit to hold its right to exclusively negotiate the terms with the city. The city and the selected developer would then begin negotiating the terms for execution of the development plan, formerly referred to as a development agreement, which would address items including, but not limited to, the terms for disposition of the land, the timing, pre-development activities, including entitlements, community engagement, design development, preliminary budgeting, permitting consideration and commitments, financial commitments, and the phasing of construction. An initial six-month timeframe is proposed for the completion of a draft development agreement with a targeted completion by September of 2018. Upon completion of the draft agreement, council will be given the opportunity to review and approve the concepts prior to their finalization and execution, which would be targeted for October of 2018. The final development agreement would be completed for execution and targeted for December of 2018. So the recommendation, recommended action by council is, the review committee is recommending moving forward with the Cosmos proposal and working to build a true public-private partnership to achieve the city's overall vision and objectives for the site and its importance for downtown. And with that, Mr. President, I will stand for questions.
Any questions from council? Ms. Witche?
Thank you. I actually have four questions. The first one is, looking at slide 22, you mentioned the different phases of building A, eight stories, and building B, six stories. Which of those included the school space, and will it be available for Renton Prep to relocate into prior to the demolition of the existing building?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Witche, let me try to explain the phasing here on this slide, and I apologize, it's not larger for your benefit and for the audience. The three buildings shown sit on a podium that is constructed first. So essentially, the first order of phasing in this project excavates a giant parking podium under what is basically the parking lot today at the 200 mil site. So it, that, when that is established, the foundation work for all three of the buildings is put in at that time. And the first phase of above-ground construction, so to speak, in terms of the residential, will be both the buildings A and B, which is the shorter building up front, which was envisioned to be approximately six stories, and the eight-story building along Mil. Those would be built concurrently on top of the parking deck and foundation structure. The building A, the six-story building, as I understand it, The building A, the six-story building, as I understand it, is where the 35,000 feet has been reserved for Renton Prep. After the completion of the buildings A and B, the first phase, that is timed so that the leases of the building, leases of the tenants in the existing building should be expiring. So the next phase of development after the construction of the buildings A and B would be to take down the building and spend about, almost a year in constructing the waterfront park and plaza. And when that park and plaza is completed, if the market conditions are right, they'll move directly into the construction of the third building, the tall 12-story building.
But they'll be able to relocate before, okay.
That's the, the, the plan is to, is that the phasing should work out where the current tenants can stay until space is, is available, should they choose.
Thank you. My second question is regarding the park. Is that going to be city-owned and maintained, and if so, is it going to meet all the same standards that we're applying to Sunset as far as the lighting, the benches? And then the other piece of that question is security and who's going to be paying for security?
Thank you, councilmember. The, the final development agreement remains to be negotiated. The proposal is for Cosmos to donate an additional $2 million to the city to help offset our construction costs. The city may choose, depending on the community planning and the master planning that's done for the site, to, to do something on a grander scale and invest more money. But to get at the crux of your question, at the end of the construction of the park, it would be turned over to the city and deeded to the city as a park asset. So at that point, it would be the city's responsibility. Obviously, there's going to be some plaza area in between that would be, for lack of a better term, common area space. If there are restaurants and if there are activities from the proposals of the school or other activities, those may kind of spill into a, a common area, and the agreements for maintenance on those are, are not concrete at this time. We could certainly look at a variety of options from having contract maintenance or taking everything over ourselves, but the property will be city-owned property.
And as far as security is concerned, have they offered to have private security on-site?
I don't know that we've got to, to that point in there. Obviously, it depends on what the final mix of, of uses are on there and, and what the final design looks like for our park versus there, but there's certainly opportunity to have those discussions.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern is the parking. So there are 450 units of rental housing, but 500 spaces, parking garage. In our latest experience, we have seen that if it's one space for, for unit, sometimes if the people have two cars, which is the standard, people park on the streets. And that area is really close to the fire station, so having cars park on the street all day, so how are we going to address that issue?
Mr. President, Councilmember Perez, thank you. As, as noted, Cosmos has a transportation engineer on their team. We have asked as part of the process that they provide a full parking plan during not just extended operations, but what that impacts are during construction. And so we will be negotiating with them to come up with a complete plan on that. Cosmos's plan does touch the library parking in that they want to resurface the library parking lot, they want to maintain the trees, they want to keep all the, the historic trees, but they want to resurf, they want to re-landscape around, and they want the surface of the parking to match the plaza. And that may result in some reconfiguration of the parking, but they will have parking available within the garage that will be a great expansion for the library, that will also serve the retail and any office tenant or, or school use. That will be segregated from their parking for their residents. And I think that they are very conscientious about the need for parking, and they understand that it is a benefit to their tenants. That said, I think that they, in the projects that the review committee was able to tour, they showed us some unique shared parking arrangements where they had, for example, in Bellevue, they had a residential office tower that shared parking with a KeyBank office building. And in the, in the day, they would offer special rates for their residents if they were willing to move their car and only park after 6:00 PM. And so they, they came up with, I think, some really creative ways to maximize the parking, knowing that they have both daytime and evening peak uses. And I think, I think we can work with them to make sure that this does not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Ms. McIrvin.
Yes, thank you for answering my question about the trees. That was actually one of them I had, so we can check that one off the list. Glad we'd be keeping some of those around there on that proposal. The question I had was in regards to, and I apologize if this was already answered elsewhere, the costs of demolition and then what's the range going up as far as the cost to build a new park? So what, what would we owe outside of that $2 million contribution would the city have?
Mr. President, Councilmember McIrvin, that has not been determined yet. We do have numbers in the pro forma on the rough costs. Each of the teams gave us what they thought the cost of demolition would be. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but the, one of the main differences in their proposal between LMC and Cosmos is that Cosmos offered the full broker's opinion of value that we had for the site, and then on top of that, offered an additional $2 million for, to help the city develop the park space because they believe it to be an amenity for, for their development as well. How much we would spend on the park depends on city council and what your wishes are to see there. Simply, you know, this could be anything from restored shoreline with, you know, a bark trail to something much more elaborate that could include amphitheaters and public plazas and, and be a much more active use. All that needs to be negotiated and planned and worked together and designed, so the, those costs to the city have not, have not been figured. On the LMC proposal, the offer that they made for the purchase price was about $2.65 million, and essentially that was, if I understand correctly, they, they, it's not based on a square foot value or anything, this was the residual value that they could offer the city based on the pro forma of the project that they wanted to build. And, and then the cost of demolition in the LMC proposal is essentially credited back against the city. And I believe, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe that was about $1.9 million.
So the $2 million could, in theory, cover the demolition and then we may be on the hook for the park?
So the demolition on the Cosmos proposal is figured in the development budget. It's outside, the city would not pay the cost of demolition in the Cosmos proposal. Cosmos would, would demolish that as part of development budget.
And then I had one other quick question.
Quick?
Very quick. I don't suppose either proposal included any affordable units in, for rental within them?
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmember. No, both of these proposals, as they stand, showed market rate proposals. There was difference a little bit on the size of the units. I think the Cosmos proposal has more studios and ones, and the LMC proposal actually had some larger, a few larger units than, than what was proposed.
Thank you. All right, so I've got a committee report here. Committee at a whole recommends concurrents and recommendation of the 200 Mill RFP review committee to authorize the city administration to commence negotiations with Cosmos Development Group for the redevelopment of the city-owned parcels at 200 Mill Avenue South. Any objections to me signing this? All right, thank you. Next up, we have facility condition assessment. Thank you so much, Cliff.
Thank you.
May I?
Real quick. Kelly, come on up. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to reiterate from, from the council's perspective, how much I appreciated both teams and both proposals. I think I would welcome participation by both development companies in, in our city and, you know, they really, both of them produce really high quality, so my thank you to, to both teams for participating.
Thank you.
They changed the name of it.
Is that it?
It's up here.
There we go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers. I'm glad to be here tonight to talk about our facility condition assessment, and I want to do a short presentation of, for you entitled "Getting Ahead of the Curve." Want to talk about the centerpiece of this presentation tonight. It's all about the facility condition assessment, but however, I want to talk about a broader context in which that assessment fits. And so we're going to go through tonight and kind of identify these key issues around what we're doing from a facility standpoint to address the conditions of our building and then talk about what the facility assessment says and, and what we plan to do with that assessment and how we are going to utilize that to do a better job of taking care of the facilities. And so tonight, as we go through the presentation, we're going to deal with a little of the history and the facts around our facilities, and there's a lot of history, talk about some of the guiding principles for facility management, talk about facilities as a business and how we're trying to run it as a business, and then get into talking about what this facility assessment, condition assessment is, is actually all about and what information it tells us. And then we'll get into the, the nuts and the bolts of the, the numbers that have come out of the assessment, and then talk about implementing various strategies as well as the tools that we're going to use to address our facility's condition. And so the history, you know, in, in 2018, the facilities division is, is responsible for something roughly around 900,000 square feet. It's, that includes 66 structures, that's as large as City Hall, but it's as small as some of the restrooms in some of our parks. The current staff responsible for that is 28 FTEs, and that consists of both maintenance people as well as custodial people. Just a little of the history is that in 2009, with the economic downturn, the facilities division was reduced by 25, its staff was reduced by 25%. So we, we're kind of dealing with the fact that we haven't had all the staff we needed to address a lot of the need for our facilities and, and deal with a lot of the repairs that are required. And then between 2009 and 2016, an additional 200, 259,000 square feet of buildings were added to facilities responsibility. And the reason I'm giving you that history is to paint the picture that over that time, what happened is, is that slowly the facilities department got further and further behind with the required maintenance and, and maintaining the various equipments and buildings. And so what we wanted to do is get an idea of where we are with our buildings, and so we, we've implemented a number of strategies as well as acquired a number of tools. The first thing I want you to understand is that we, we have a very, very clear picture of what it is that we need to do and who we are. I, I throw this out all the time as to what our vision is about, and that's about being committed, being competent, and being courageous. We're committed to our customers, we're committed to doing the work that we, we have been assigned to do. We are all about being competent and acquiring the skills, the knowledge, the information, the tools that we need to do the work and to do it at a high level. But then we're also courageous enough to take on the task that we have and to not shy away from the fact that, yeah, we, we don't have all the things that we need, but yet still, we're courageous enough every day to come and find, how can we get it done? And tonight, we'll talk about some of that. Our business motto is all around people, processes, and place. We're focused on people. The thing that I talk to my staff about all the time is about being customer-focused, and that customer is not only our citizens, but also our internal customers who occupy the buildings and provide services to our citizens. But then we're also all about improving our processes. Since, since I've been here coming up on two years and a few days, I've been focused on incorporating the types of processes that we can be efficient, the types of processes that we can get ahead of the curve and do the things that we need to do. But our whole focus is also on place. We're responsible for making the buildings not only functional from a mechanical standpoint, but functional as it relates to the occupants and how they utilize the buildings. And so what we needed was toolbox as well as tools to go in that box, and since over the last couple of years, those are some of the tools that we've acquired to be able to do the job that you've asked for us to do, from smartphones to laptops, we've changed schedules, we reorg, we've changed how we budget, we've looked at opportunities to save dollars. And particularly tonight, I want to talk about one of those tools, which is the facility condition assessment. And the question is, what is a facility condition assessment? And what you will see on this slide is there's a lot of information about what that is because it is a lot, and it provides a lot of information, not only telling us how much deferred maintenance we have, how much it costs to replace the various components, when those components need to be replaced, how much it will cost for us to be able to, to maintain and operate those things. It, it, it's comprised of a lot of information, and I understand you all got a copy of that assessment and probably looked through that and saw all the numbers and all of the analysis, and it, it's a lot to handle, but for us, it's a good document because it provides us the information that we need to be able to make the appropriate decisions around the component replacement in our buildings. And so the next thing is, is what, what did this assessment provide us? One, it provided us a plan for orderly, orderly building component replacement and identified what those needs are. And as you saw, that there are many needs that we have, and, and, and so it also not only assessed the condition, but also assessed and prioritize what are those needs and which are the immediate, more crucial needs, and that's provided in, in the assessment. But also, it's a short and long-range component replacements, cost analysis, because the question is, not only do we have to replace it, but how much is that going to cost? And how, how much will that cost over time? As you looked at that assessment, you'll see that it actually goes out 30 years, and as you can see in there, if you, you, you can see that some of those components over that 30-year period of time will be replaced more than once or twice, some of it as many as times as three and four, because the life of the component- as times as three and four, because the life of the component only lives about eight to 10 years. And so it tells us that. But then also, it gives us an inventory of all of our equipment and systems that we have in our buildings. And what it did was assess over 1,700 different components in those 66 buildings. And it's given us an idea of where they are in their life expectancy and what we need to do to, to continue to repair and take care of those. It also gave us the ability to target the most urgent and critical equipment that needs to be replaced. It identified our, our operation and maintenance needs and capital planning initiatives. What are the things that we need to plan for and, and start right now figuring out how we're going to pay for? The plan, it, the plan also prevents adverse impacts to the city, because one of the reasons that they were assessing it to determine which, which of those components could possibly break down and negatively or adversely impact the operations of our buildings. And so here are some of the key numbers that come out of this facility condition assessment. Like I said, it covered 66 structures. Two of those structures are minor structures, so it's, it's the 64 structures that they have a lot of information on. It's roughly 730,000 square feet, over 1,700 components that were assessed. And as you can see, the net, the net present value of the, all of those structures is roughly about $42 million. That's what they are worth. And as you can see on the first year, as we look at all of the prioritized components that need to replace in all our different buildings, that that number is almost $6 million of component replacement that would need to take place in the first year. And some of those are critical to buildings such as City Hall. And then over five years, we're looking at a cost of 13, over $13 million for the component replacement that needs to happen. And then for fif, over the 15-year period of time, we're talking about $27 million worth of component replacement. And, and when I talk about replacing these components, it's based on them analyzing and determining how much life is left for those components, what their conditions are, and even it incorporates the fact that over time, we will do various preventative maintenance on those components and try to extend that life. But it, it gives you a clear picture of what those components are and what that cost is over time. And so it provides us a, a number of projects that we would have to do and, and funding options we would have to look at to determine how would we go about paying for that. And what we will do is we'll look for various plans and options. And the way I operate is, is that I, I never just have a Plan A. I usually have a Plan B. I have a Plan C. I have a Plan D. All the, all the plans until we get to the plan that works best for us. And so the, the primary thing that we'll do in these various plans is prioritize what needs to be done and determine what needs to be done first and how do we go about paying for that? We'll assess condition. We'll figure out what the impacts will be on the various operations in the buildings, and then come up with a plan to be able to find out how we'll be able to fund that. Well, one of the ways that we will look at funding that, and we've already initiated, is that we're in the process of also, from this information, being able to produce what is known as an energy audit. And the energy audit takes this, some of the components that are in the facility condition assessment and does an analysis to say if we improve those components, whether or not there could be some energy or water savings. Can we save money on our energy and water bill? And with those, those particular components can be separated, and we can look at financing them by them paying for themselves over time by the fact that they would save dollars. And so we're looking at that as being one of the options that we'll have, but it won't cover all of the components that need to be replaced. But it will have some components where we can isolate and say that over time, once we make these changes, we can save on our energy and water bill. Actions taken by the facilities department. Over the last couple of years, we've made, we've taken a lot of different actions. I've come to you and asked for some of those actions to be done. We've added a facility maintenance supervisor in order that we can have somebody overseeing our work orders and, and directing the work of our maintenance workers. I've moved three of our custodial FTEs over to the maintenance side. Now, it's a little bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul, but where we have our greatest risk is from components failing. And so what I'm doing is I'm pulling from our custodial staff, and I've placed over three additional maintenance techs to be able to address the various repairs that we need to have done. Also, we've implemented or in the process of implementing a work management system. This work management system will give us the ability to, to better take care of the work orders that we have, organize that, and be able to help us make better decisions as to how we deal with the deferred maintenance, how we deal with the various component, components, and how we can do our work in a more efficient way. Also, we are implementing with the work management system a preventative maintenance program. And what this will do is help us be able to be a little bit more proactive in dealing with trying to get to various components before they fail. And currently, we haven't been doing that, but this will give us the capability to be able to know what, what pieces of equipment, what components need to be worked on. And then also, we've increased our mobile capability by giving our staff smartphones, and that only helps them with be able to order parts and be able to do, go online and have to be able to, to solve problems while they're on the site and not have to come back to the office to be able to do those things. And then we've increased, we've implemented a 24/7 maintenance on-call program. And when I, when we first got here, pretty much, we only had one that covered the weekend. But right now, we 24/7. If anything happens in the city, you can call the facility hotline, and what will happen is a maintenance worker will answer that throughout the day and throughout non-business hours. We have somebody answering the phone. And then also, we've, we've implemented and increased our maintenance tech time. Before, we only had nine hours of day during our business hours that we had maintenance techs available. But we flexed the schedules, and by flexing those schedules, we went from nine hours a day to 14 hours a day of having a maintenance worker on-site to be able to address various issues with our components. And then we've, we are starting to train our maintenance custodial staff to be able to assist us in handling some of the basic maintenance needs that we have in order that we can focus our maintenance techs on the most, the more complex maintenance-type issues. What is our next step? The next step is, is that we've already hired a firm to start the energy audit, and once we get that information, we'll utilize that to determine which, which of these components have a return on investment. We've also, the facilities will also take the findings from what we have as far as cost and sit with our finance department and consult as to how we can pay for the component replacement that needs to happen, and that we will come back to you and have some proposal for the 2019, 2020 budget cycle and, and determine what components will be replaced and how we will pay for those. And so the presentation summary is, is that our history and facts demonstrate that we are at risk and vulnerable as it relates to our component replacement. It, it reveals the fact that, you know, our paradigm is to focus on us being, having a clear vision and executing a business plan for facilities that's going to help us address these problems. And that over time, what we will do with this facility, this facility condition assessment is use it as a strategic tool to help us better make decisions. But then with the capability that we have with our work management system, we'll be able to better make decisions because it'll do some of the analysis and some diagnostic work for us to be able to help us to address the most urgent components that we have. And so what we'll do is at some point, once we sit down with finances, come back with a plan as to how we can address the financial issue related to the, the facility condition assessment. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes. Very impressive. Thank you very much. The assessment that we had done, it costs us about $127,000 and was done by McKinstry?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay. And my understanding is that what we, we have in hand is an assessment on each building, so that if I wanted to say the community center over in Carco Park, there will be a, a written summary of, of its condition, what's needed, and, and all that. And you have that for every, every building?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Person, it, it basically breaks down every component in each of those buildings.
But we have them for each individual building, so that even somebody like me could pick up that document and look and see what I wouldn't, I'm not really a guy that's into spreadsheets. So I guess I would, what I want is I want that report and, and on paper, because that's the way I deal, and I can, I can go through and highlight and, and mark it. So that should be, that's available, as I understand it.
Kelly? That will be available.
I mean, don't we, we don't, we have that report now?
Yeah. What you have is, what we gave you is...
What you gave me doesn't really tell me anything, to be honest with you. I need...
We will, we can provide, we do have that information. We'll break it down, so it's in, out of the spreadsheet form.
Well, I, yeah, I just, I want the rough report. I want the report that McKinstry sent us, so that I can...
What you have is actually the report, and after we finish with the spreadsheets, they will produce a report that will have pictures of every component and provide that. They have not completed that portion of the report.
It's, it is identified in all the spreadsheets, so we'll, we'll make sure that we break that down, so you've got the list per building.
Yeah. I, I, maybe I'm not clear.
I think I understand what you're asking for.
I don't want a spreadsheet. I want the actual report, so that I can look at it like on my day timer.
Yes.
And say, oh, there is the little old park building up on Renton Hill, and this is what the assessment of it was. And then I can go and say, oh, this is, this is the building, this is down the, the parking garage, and this is the assessment, and this is, this is what they're saying. So...
Yes.
Question to staff from council is, will there be a narrative?
Yes.
With narrative descriptions, not a spreadsheet, not in a spreadsheet format, perhaps tables, but something that's a narrative that says for the Paccar Building, or Theater, Paccar Theater, this is the building, this much square footage, they have, you know, 183 components, and the condition is X. I think that's what you're looking for, councilman. Is that correct?
My understanding, that's what this report could be.
And, and I, and that will, you will have that report. That report is not complete.
How soon will we be able to have that?
I mean, McKinstry hasn't given us that report?
Uh, no. The, what you have in the spreadsheet is...
No, I, I know what I don't have in the spreadsheet. I, I mean, I, I'm assuming, boy, I'm, I'm just, you've got to understand, I'm a simpleton on this stuff, that when I get a report, I, we spent $127,000, or thereabouts. McKinstry must have given us some kind of a booklet of stuff.
Deliverable.
Huh?
A deliverable.
A deliverable that tells us, okay, here's this, here's a building. It's, it's code is green. It's, and here's the problems, and this is the time. And so then I can go to the next page, or after five pages, there's another building.
I think Kelly's trying to...
Yeah. Councilmember Person, completely agree with what you're saying, and we will be doing that. We wanted to get the information out, the full information out to you as soon as possible. Yes, it's not in its narrative form yet, but it is coming from McKinstry, so we want to make sure within what has been provided currently is a list of, is a list of everything, but each of that will be included in the narrative report.
Kelly, do you know how soon you'll be able to get the narrative to us?
That narrative report will be done within three months.
So prior to budget?
Yes.
We'll be getting that out in...
So we'll get it before summer?
Man, I'll tell you what, that's taking a long time to get it. Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, just so...
Okay. Nope.
Now know what I would like to have, and, and hopefully I can get it in.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions from council?
Can I?
I'll have a lot more when I get the report.
I know.
Mr. President.
Yes, please.
I want to explain the, what you have, the spreadsheet you have, and why you have that versus the report. The report is coming. The spreadsheet and that information is, was the focus, because it, you're going to get the report, but we're going to take that information and download it into the work management system that we have. And from that information, we can immediately start running reports. That, that was the urgency is for them to complete this spreadsheet, then to repeat, do the report that Councilman Person wants. That'll have pictures. It'll have every building. It'll have pictures that they've taken, tell you the conditions, and have a narrative.
I, I, I think we, we understand. I, I think my final point on this would be, the sooner we can have that before budget, the better.
Absolutely.
I'd hate to have that right around budget time. I'd like to have it before budget time. So if Mr. Person or any other council members have questions, they can, they can answer their questions and be informed before we go into budgets.
We will definitely expedite it, since this was the first facilities condition assessment that we've done, the city's done, that there's quite a bit of information, so I want to make sure we get it all accurate.
Oh, absolutely. I bet. I bet.
So we'll make sure and expedite that.
All right. If there are no other questions, we are adjourned. We will reconvene at 7:00 as full council.
Thank you.